All right, good evening all, we'll call this meeting to order. Our record shows six thirty-three P M. Let's rise for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O'Callaghan, Crave here.
Dolphin here.
Snyder here.
Carter here.
Cummings here.
Yerkes here.
I have in front of me a proof of all stains proper meeting notices. Brings us down to the action of the agenda. Just noted this evening on the agenda, just for clarification, under action item J. We've got a clarification for Megan Burns and we've got Jacob Merkel also added in five to twelve social studies curriculum lead. We're aware of no other changes to the agenda this evening. Look for a motion.
Cummings will make that motion.
Okay, I want you on the floor by Miss Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurdis to approve the agenda with the aforementioned changes or additions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to the action of the minutes from the Board and the Rounds Committee meeting from Tuesday, June twenty fifth. Any noted changes here?
I didn't know that.
Neither so I'm going for approval.
Cummings will second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Miss Cummings to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to the action of the minutes from the regular meeting from July tenth in the closed session. Again, any noted changes or corrections?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the regular board meeting from July tenth.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Miss Cummings, seconded by Mr. Um.
Dolphin. Oh, new guy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries on a six oh votes vote. And finally, the minutes, the action of the minutes from the regular meeting on July tenth in the closed session.
Cummings will make that motion to approve the closed session minutes from July tenth.
Crave will second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Miss Cummings, seconded by Mr. Crave to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries on a six oh votes vote. Brings us into a presentation of the board, the class of twenty twenty four senior parking spot personalization.
Emerson is here.
Okay. I like to know that. So, I'm Emerson, I'm a senior at Waterloo High School and I'm also the captain of our school's driven team. And one thing that we presented to Mr. Copeland last year is that our senior class wanted to paint parking spaces um for a senior year. And I do know other surrounding schools like Marshall and Cambridge, Lake Mills, that do participate in this. So I asked Mr. Copeland about it and we started to like dive into it more. And me, Mr. Bartel and Mr. Copeland all made like a guideline list of how this could be possible because there are a lot of questions and concerns about this. So I just kind of made like a whole guideline list, like a two-page paper that I sent to Mr. Bartel. And he thought it was a really good idea because I also think it's a really good idea to bring our class together. And I just, I think it'd be really fun on the parking lot. Um, I already got Mr. Copeland and Ms. Leonard to come supervise dates to do this. So there will be teacher supervisors there um to make sure that nothing inappropriate, nothing controversial will be painted on the parking lot. Um, and we all have, we have dates picked out and everything, so.
Where are the spots going to be?
Um, me and Mr. Bartel were talking about that and we were thinking if we didn't want like the premium parking spots to be painted over for some reason, I don't know, we could use like the line of parking spots like towards that way. But I wanted to ask what you guys would think about that because it is the school's property, obviously, so. How many are there?
How many would be, if everyone did one?
Like they, everyone could do one, but I'm only estimating like ten, maybe fifteen people to do it because you would have to buy your own supplies. So if they want to buy their own supplies and paint the parking spot, they can. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't think the whole senior class would do it, so. But yeah, um, I just, I want to make it clear that there will be like teacher supervisors there. So, cause I know like with our school, we have a set of rules. So, um, the teachers, you have to get your idea approved by the teacher before you paint it on the parking lot. Just to make sure everything's clear, but yeah.
What kind of paint product will you use?
Um, me and Mr. Bartel were doing some research and I think it's like, I don't know the title of it, but I think it's like latex paint or something like that. I don't. Yeah.
Just wonder what, what your plans are for covering up for teachers in the classroom.
Yeah, um, we were um asking around different schools what they did and they sent us like links and products and their whole guideline list. So we had Cambridge send us their guideline list and they've been nothing but successful with this project. So they have all the paints, I don't know off the top of my head, but they have all the brands of paint that they use to do it and cover it up. So Cambridge was helping us with that, but yeah. But a guideline list will be sent out to all seniors before this happens, so they know all the rules of it beforehand.
I, I read this and I thought, kind of like, I wasn't real keen on it.
Yeah.
Cause I was kind of like, well, do I have a car or don't I have a car? Am I a senior or not? What gives them the right versus the other schools? And it kind of seems to me like a little bit of senior bullying almost.
It's a really, I mean, like I've seen a lot of other schools do it and one just painted minions. And it's, it's a really fun idea, like to get the whole class involved and have, I mean, I know maybe only ten or fifteen will do it, but it's a really cool idea. I know that there are a lot of kids want to do it, um, because people have been, why don't we do it? I, I don't know, I think it, I don't think it's like bullying at all, I think it's more about.
Yeah, and this also like sparked an idea in my brain because I know this was like the whole high school, but um, I know like back in the day, like we used to paint the windows downtown and I thought this could start a new trend to kind of replace that because I know a lot of people enjoyed doing that and we stopped doing that. So I think this would be something new to um help replace that. But I, I do get what you're saying, but I do think it's just something that the senior class could come together as a class of twenty twenty-five and just like kick off our senior year with, but um, yeah. Do you have any more questions? That's all I have.
No other questions, board members? We'll discuss later on in the business section of the meeting, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emerson.
Uh, Moon Ray Long, administrative reports up first is Mr. Bartel to talk about the handbook and curricular updates. Portrait of a graduate. So you're on the floor, Mr. Bartel.
Good evening. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Emerson, for presenting. I know the students have been really planning for that. And just to answer a few of those questions, um, it's a water-based latex paint that students would use. And at the end of the year, they would paint over the black latex paint and people would use. Our parking lot gives a boat on part of the way fall in the school year, so we would make sure we're being kind of those areas. So it wouldn't be like premium parking like Emerson said. So I just wanted to clarify a few things and I, I believe the forms in your packet, that there's an approval form that they would have to give it, get it signed off on before they would show up on the day of painting, um, and I would approve those. So just wanted to highlight a few of those areas. So thank you, Emerson, for presenting. Um, so just from our handbook perspective at the high school, uh, the first thing is just some small edits with updating staffing, school board information. And then there's, there's two recommendations that I am putting forth today. Um, the first one is we have our honor roll that we do every term. And I have a list there of what the GPA requirements are for principal, high honor roll and honor roll. And then at the end of the year, we have our academic recognition. And points are awarded based off of GPA. So the points do not line up with what we have for the honor roll and there's no rhyme and reason for why they're different. It's just kind of always done that way. So working through it this past year and this summer, um, myself and our office staff sat down and wanted to make it, um, make it match a little bit more. So reached out to local schools and asked what their honor rolls look like at their schools. And I'd say eighty percent have what aren't proposing with the honor roll from a three point oh to a three point nine for honor roll or a three point oh to three point four, um, three point five to three point nine would be high and a four point oh would be principal. Again, probably what eighty percent of those that I reached out to have that. So that's where we went with that, um, which then the, um, you know, lined it up with our, our recognition, our academic awards. Currently, freshmen can't receive any academic awards, even if they have four point oh's all year, they can't get a, um, a certificate. So the way that we have it worked out now, freshmen are able to earn that, otherwise they sit in that academic awards not being able to be recognized for their academics. So again, we wanted to align it, um, it's not trying to lower standards. If, if we, if, if the board feels that lowering that honor roll to a three point oh, lower standards, I would then just propose that we would make our academic award points match up with the honor roll system that we have. So again, I have it laid out there for you. And then the, the third piece with our handbook update would just be the grade improvement, the course retake. As of now, there really isn't a good process for this. And in my four years at the high school, we haven't had many of these situations, but we wanted to make sure we had a really good system in place for a reason for a student to retake a class. So as you can see there, proposed change would be you have to receive a C or lower. Um, it, it just can't be, I have a B plus and I want to get an A minus. So there's specific criteria for students to retake a class. Um, because it does have an effect on class rank, which then has an effect on scholarships. And we don't want to have students just retaking a class to go from an A minus to an A to, to get into a top five in your class or a top ten in class. So we want to make sure we're keeping that, those expectations high and our rigor up. Um, and then there's just an example of what the form would look like. It's a brief little form we would have in our office. Um, so those are the updates for our handbook that I'm proposing tonight. Um, I know of two other things to talk about, but I just want to see if there's any questions or anything I can clarify with those pieces.
Questions, board members? Mr. Bartel, I got a question. I'm just curious, so why are we advocating to lower the standard for sprint or, excuse me, high honor roll and honor roll?
Yeah, so, so we wanted it to line up directly with our academic awards that we do at the end of every school year. Um, and just re, looking at our handbook this year and when I, we were exploring how we could make that work, I wanted to see if we were similar with other schools or not. Um, it's not, I, I know we're lowering for the honor roll, but we're also recognizing, um, that our students, um, that are able to, a, a three point oh is a D average, so that's still, average is D, so that's still achieving higher than the average student. So a three point oh with all Bs, you would get recognized as an honor roll. So finding ways to recognize the hard work our students are putting in. And again, if, if the board feels that's lowering standards by awarding students would be as honor roll, as, as an average, I would just support that we keep our current system and then we would just make sure our academic awards look back to match that. We just want to have consistency, um, because right now students don't understand how they get honor roll or how they, how they get points.
So can you speak to how we got to the current point designation and why they don't match?
I cannot. That was in place when I got there, um, and I wasn't highly involved with it until we had Mrs. DeBree come on board and she was looking at it a little more closely since I don't have high involvement with it. We started asking questions, well, why is it like this? So I don't know what started the point system and how that was awarded. Um, but to me, it doesn't make sense to have two different scales when we're awarding students awards and then recognizing every term with honor roll. We want them to be similar matchup.
Okay.
I know Mr. Henning knows why, I don't know if he has that input, I don't, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the history of that either, Sean. It goes back a long time.
Okay.
I'm kind of leaning to, I am definitely leaning towards keeping our original higher GPA of a three point three versus dropping down to the three point of the, uh, honor roll.
Three point oh?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and the, the three point three is a B plus average with all your classes for the term and a three point oh is a B average. So that's kind of the difference between that. So you're looking at a, um, where am I, um, great, you're looking at a ninety point one percent to a ninety three percent for a, for a student that's an A. You're looking at about an eighty four percent to eighty seven percent in a class is a B, you do a B plus, you're at about an eighty seven to eighty nine point nine.
Mr. Bartel, could you ballpark, um, now how many students, what percentage of our student body are on high or, excuse me, honor roll or higher currently?
Um, percentage? Oh, I don't have that in front of me. I should have had that ready for you. I would say, um, principals, honor roll, average, we probably have about ten to fifteen. High honor roll, we probably have about twenty-five and honor roll, probably closer to forty-ish. So it would bump up that number and again, I don't have like hard data in front of me. I could say I'm average. Kids that were still reaching this right now, like a three point oh to a three point two nine, you'd probably add on another fifteen to twenty students, just on average.
Okay. It's a little more important. On the grade improvement or the retake?
Yep.
Under the proposed change, it's item B. So help me understand, so if you retake it, you're gonna get credited for the most recent grade? Do we just ignore the first go around?
So it's still on their transcript because they take the class twice. They don't receive credit for it though. So we would take the most recent grade, yes. They're both reflected on the student transcript, so it shows that they took the class two times. For example, they would still earn a half credit or a one credit. They, they would not earn that half credit or a one credit since they already did receive it, but it would be reflected on their, on their transcript.
So why would we move away from our current policy? It says we average it? We average the term?
Yeah, so if a student had like, I mean, right now, we don't have anything in policy or in writing that if a student has a B plus, they can retake the class. Um, which, you know, that's exceeding expectate, I mean, you're, you're reading expectations a little bit higher. So we want to make sure it's someone, something that is at zero below that you are retaking that class for the right reasons. And also if we, um, want to keep up with the, the current content, as we know, sometimes standards change or taken within a year, we want to make sure it reflects the most correct learning targets and objectives that we're hitting in that class.
Okay. But on the flip side, if you, so you get the first time, you got a D and then you've got it together and you get an A, you're getting credited for an A the second go around?
Yeah, you would get, you would get the grade that you recently took correct. Because you then mastered those skills and you understand this. So instead of averaging, you would master those skills, which would reflect the learning, um, what, the learning you've done over that semester or a year.
Any other questions, board members? There are no questions, Sean, so.
Sure, uh, I have, I have a monitor for the co-curricular update, um, I'll, I'll just kind of give a little background. Early, late winter, early spring, a parent met with us, um, said that parent was speaking on behalf of, of, of a few other parents looking at how there could be some restitution for students, uh, who make it right if they made a mistake early on in their high school career. So currently held with in our co-curricular handbook is if a student hits a violation their first week, their freshman year when they're fourteen, um, that's with them all the way through their senior year, right? And we understand it's extracurricular, we have high expectations for, for our students that participate in that. But, um, you know, you grow and mature a lot over those years in high school. So the, when the parent approached myself in our A Ds, you know, started thinking about, is there a way that we can look at whether there's some type of volunteering, something that students can do to, um, kind of get a clean slate to start over with if there's one violation? So that's why, um, it was proposed that I think it was twenty-five hours of community service that would have to be approved, um, to, to do that. And, uh, again, there's every school year, just the form records, you start fresh. Um, you know, from year to year, everything gets cleared, all the pensions get cleared from here. I mean, we still have the documentation of it, so it's a fresh start for everyone. And yes, I know this is would be extracurricular, but that was brought to our attention and, um, you know, we kind of talked through the process with the parents and, um, wanted to put it in front of the board for, for a possibility of doing a change for that. Again, I understand that is extracurricular, but again, looking at the student as a whole and how much they grow and mistakes happen with kids in high school and how we can make it right by maybe putting some time into, um, you know, volunteering for, if we need to, want to get gifts, this would get approved, um, with the app, maybe only with the school they come out to here instead of just, you know, opening doors. But again, that would have to get approved by our A D and myself, so it's not just you're helping and you're a family friend. It's, it's going to be you're actually volunteering for it. So the reason for that is just to give, you know, a fourteen-year-old that, that makes a mistake early in their career, gives them an opportunity if, if they are, you know, something happens that there's, there's a chance that they could maybe work towards it and, and get a fresh start their junior year.
Do you know if there are other districts that have this type of policy in place?
Um, there are. I don't know, I've not had the names of every district that has that, but yes, um, there are districts that have opportunities for restorative practices when it comes to their co-co-curricular book to make it right. Do the majority, over fifty percent, I don't think so, but there are some schools that have that, um, in their co-curricular book, yes.
So whether this is adopted or not, the clean slate every year still applies, is that correct?
No, they don't, there's no, none of that. When I was saying that Charlie, I was saying that's our, that's like our student handbook. They get a, students get a clean slate, so the eight to three twenties students that aren't in, um, extracurriculars or co-curriculars, you know, if you're a freshman and there was, you know, pen write-ups and a suspension, when they're a sophomore, it's a clean slate. They, that doesn't, we don't double up on that. Now, in co-curriculars, we do all the way through their senior year.
Okay. Any other questions?
If they did volunteer for twenty-five hours, that wouldn't go towards the volunteer hours that you want to get when you're a senior, correct?
No, it wouldn't go towards the silver fourth program because this would be specific to the co-curricular only, so.
Okay.
That would, students would not be able to double hours.
So what happens when you're a junior? Can you break the code of conduct?
Uh, you know, it's almost like envisioning it like every two years you, you get a, a clean slate with this. So, um, you would have the, you would not have an opportunity to do that because if you're looking at splitting it, you know, halfway through their high school career.
So if freshman year you mess up, then you, in junior year, you can do twenty-five hours and get that clean slate off? Is that what you're saying? Or would it be wiped as freshman year?
You would have, you would have to have the volunteer hours done before, I, I, the date, uh, is it August one going into your junior, your junior year? That's the only chance. If they're not completed and you have twenty-four hours and it's not coming into the school, you don't get it, you wouldn't get a clean slate. So all the hours have to be done. I think it's August one because that's when our sports start, you know, football starts that week or the week after.
So this is only if someone makes a poor decision their freshman year and really.
Or sophomore.
Or sophomore.
Yeah.
Or sophomore.
Correct. Yeah. If a junior has a mistake or makes a mistake or would not have the opportunity for that, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Is this a one-time occurrence thing? Is it messed up once or they get one, or do you have a freshman year and junior year sophomore year, sorry?
It is just one, yes. They're not, it would be a, 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 a one-time thing, correct. So if there's two violations, it would take it down to one.
Okay.
I apologize when I say clean slate. I'll be honest, we don't have a lot of double, you know, incidents in our school, which is great. Um, so when I say clean, I just kind of reference what happened in the past four years. We don't have a lot of double violations. But if there were, were to be one freshman, one sophomore, then would students does twenty-five hours and bump it down?
Any other questions? Back here, Danny Shonda.
All right, the last will be quick. I just want to give an update with, um, the redefining readiness work that we're doing in our district. Our case tool, um, I'm taking the lead with Scott Carr to create a portrait of a graduate. We had a meeting two weeks ago and we have our second one tomorrow night. And we probably have about twenty people at our first meeting, uh, parents, students, uh, two board members and, um, staff and then also some local companies, businesses came to the meeting. And a lot of it was just introducing what redefining readiness is to make that group aware of it. Ultimately, i- if we would have thirty or forty people at that meeting tomorrow, tomorrow, that would be great. We're just looking for feedback to make partnerships and then similar to the portrait of a school board member, which I believe the board's working on, we're making a portrait of a graduate, um, with what's, um, local companies and businesses expect our students, what our school has expectations and, um, we're going to put that all together. So tomorrow's our second meeting, probably early mid-September, we'll have a, another meeting with a goal of by October, we'll have a portrait of a graduate. Pretty solidified at that time. I'd love to share that and that, you know, come late fall, what that looks like.
Any questions, board members? There are none. Thank you, Mr. Bartel.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we'll turn the floor over to Christine Zune to talk about the intermediate middle school handbook and Act twenty updates.
So for the intermediate and middle school handbook, we do not have any major changes. We have just updated the annual things like calendar, staff directory, fines, fees, um, and our policies and reference to policies. The only major change that we have is we updated our headlights, um, policy with recommendations from Nurse Sarah and the Academy of Pediatrics. So those are the only changes for our handbook. Any questions on any of that?
No.
No.
Okay, so for Act twenty, I just want to keep you all informed on what's happening, um, in that area of education. Um, we currently have twenty staff members in K three with some additional special ed staff, some, um, English learner staff and our literacy interventionists. They are currently completing the keys to beginning reading modules over the summer, which is one of the required, sorry, required trainings um, from Act twenty and then they will participate in professional development during the school year with a representative from CSET II. So they were completing the modules over the summer. They will, um, get a statement for completing those and then they will participate in the professional development and then we will have met that requirement for Act twenty. The state of Wisconsin has also announced that Ames One Plus will be the universal screener in reading for four K through grade three. The four K assessments will include phonemic awareness and letter sound knowledge. And five K three will be phonemic awareness, decoding skills, alphabet knowledge, letter sound knowledge and. And five K three will be phonemic awareness, decoding skills, alphabet knowledge, letter sound knowledge and level vocabulary. So we are waiting to see what the training for that looks like. And we are ready to hear more from D P I and Autumn Love Down to all of them. Any questions on that so far? All right.
Thank you.
Right along, Miss, you can talk about the elementary school handbook and summer school.
Okay, um, so, um, my handbook, um, is very similar to what Christine was just talking about, right? Just those, um, few updates. I did just, probably the one that you have right now, Dawson's, have the new headlights policy. But really, I just, I wanted, uh, my handbook and Christine's to be very, um, you know, the same. So, so we have some consistency. So my headlights policy is the same as hers, but it might be different than the one in your packet currently. But that, um, was a change that I just made today. And so if you look at Christine's, you'll know what mine looks like. Because I literally just kind of pasted it out because that was the one that we got from Nurse Sarah. The other thing that's missing from my handbook were the, just some replacement fees from Cory I just got built today. So if you look, it should say that an iPad is going to cost three hundred dollars to replace. An iPad case, it'll say twenty-four dollars. An iPad charger will say nineteen. And then the iPad charger cable is also nineteen. So those are the things I'm going to be adding into those, into that table now that I have those numbers. So other than that, my handbook is very similar, not any big changes. Questions about that?
I hear any?
All right, and now I'm going to talk about summer school. I'm really excited. We had a great summer school. I was really pleased. Um, we had over thirty-one courses that we offered kids. Uh, some of them we won't offer next summer because they didn't fill up. But we have some really popular classes. Um, our, all, all of our fire classes are super popular. Legos are super popular, arts and crafts. We have some different arts and crafts this, this year that were really fun. Our math skills was like a super hit. Everyone wanted to take our math skills class, which I thought was really exciting for us. Um, we had a coding class this year, um, that was very popular. We did, we tried adventure camp this year and that was really fun. Um, I got to go and the district office staff was, was, uh, troopers and they all came along um, on different adventures that we had with a group of, of students, different adventures. That was really, that was really quite wonderful. And eleven high schoolers complete the makeup, some classwork that they needed to do. Um, we have some, we, we had, I believe, about two hundred and thirteen kids enroll in summer school this year. And that, I don't think we doubled last year, but we came really close. We really worked really hard. And Brian had some great ideas for this, you know, I think adventure camp was sort of his idea. And then we just kind of ran with it. Um, so we were really excited about the fact that we, we almost doubled our, uh, enrollment for summer school. And we have some really good ideas, again, for next summer. I want to add in like, uh, I want to do a summer musical next year. And a junior version of a really popular show is a really great way to do summer school. I really want to add in some more sports, um, camps, like, um, T-ball, things like that. But I don't want to step on any toes of anybody, so or anything. But we really want, we are really excited. And of course, adventure camp's going to come back and maybe even, we had some teachers even want to do some summer school like now and then do some summers, uh, like, I'm sorry, like in June, right away when summer's out and then maybe another three weeks before, until the start of school. So that's an option that we're thinking about. So anyway, I'm sorry, rambling on about summer schools. We have more things to talk about, but I was really excited about, about summer school this summer. Any questions?
Any questions? Happy to hear the enrollment was so high.
I would really like it to be longer if possible. Maybe go into July a little bit more. I, I think maybe parents might appreciate it as something in August. Maybe a little too, maybe a little August. Cause you know, so those are some things that are really, that we're exploring and thinking about for next summer.
Then you have to volunteer to teach.
Hey. I don't know. Oh, yeah, two weeks.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Brings us to Miss Armistrath to talk about Title Nine changes and special ed staffing.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening. I'll start with the less complicated. Well, that's not true. Special ed staffing is pretty complicated. It's been a lot of work, um, and we, it is, it is a field that has, um, the needs for, for applicants. But I'm very excited to say that we have secured, um, two really good staff members. One to fill our speech and language position and one, um, for high school special education. So it's been quite a journey, um, but we, we, we got there. So I'm excited to share that news with you. Then, um, I will move on to the Title Nine twenty twenty-four regulation changes and I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to attempt to. All right, is that showing up for everybody?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so, um, in, in this presentation, I want to, um, just let you know that the goal of this presentation is to give you, um, an informational overview of the changes in the new twenty twenty-four Title Nine federal regulations. Um, the final rule of the federal regulations is over four hundred pages. So caveat, I did not read that. Um, so just in my training, um, and, um, in different, um, experiences, I'm, I'm going to focus on just those key overview pieces. Uh, then I'm going to update the board on staff training and next steps for the district when it comes to Title Nine. So just a reminder that, um, Title Nine regulations are a federal law that prohibits discrimination based on sex in educational programs and activities that receive federal funding. So there are several notable changes, um, that I'd like to highlight. The first is that in the new regulations, we have a broader definition of harassment. So in the twenty twenty regulations, um, sexual harassment, um, is replaced with the twenty twenty-four regulations with sex-based harassment. So this includes unwelcome sex-based conduct that is severe or pervasive. This can be verbal, non-verbal, or physical contact. And sex-based harassment includes quid pro quo harassment, hostile environment harassment, and then sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. In the new regulations, we also have expanded protection. So now coverage includes discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. So this expands to include conduct of a sexual nature as well as harassment or unequal treatment based on one's sex, such as pregnancy or gender. Another change to note would be off camp, off-campus incidents. So the new regulate nice the impact of off-campus behavior, uh, potentially it could have on the educational environment. So in these, in these new regulations, schools must address incidents that happen outside of school if they create a hostile environment at school. And this can include, um, online or social media incidents. In the new regulations, pregnancy is highlighted and protections are increased for schools who are pregnant or parenting. Um, and it notes the reasonable accommodations for pregnancy-related conditions. So for example, um, excusing absences for medical appointments. In regards to athletics, uh, new regulations do not include, uh, rules related to athletic eligibility and participation criteria. In regards to complaint procedures, the twenty twenty-four regulations really allow for more flexibility in how schools handle complaints. Some of the timelines, um, have shifted, um, to, to create that flexibility. But there's still a continued emphasis on fair and equitable processes for all parties. When it comes to role-specific requirements, there have been some changes in the twenty twenty-four regulations. For example, the Title Nine coordinator can designate more than one coordinator. Um, districts are still required to have, to name a coordinator or more than one coordinator with ultimate authority. But up in the past, there was one coordinator that, that, um, coordinated. Um, in the regulations now, all employees have responsibility to, for conduct constitute sex discrimination. And, um, we now in the, in the new regulations, allow for a single investigator model. So previously, we had to have an investigator and then we had to have a separate decision maker. In the new regulations, the investigator can also be the decision maker. Uh, there's still appeal decision makers, but now we have, uh, the role of facilitator of informal uh, sorry, that should be informal, it says information, informal resolution. And then a last piece regarding that would be, um, it is noted that if a student isn't, uh, part of it, uh, has an I E P or a five oh four, it is required to, uh, consult with one or more of the members of the I E P or five oh four team. When it comes to training, all employees must receive annual training related to all forms of sex discrimination upon hiring. And, uh, title coordin, uh, Title Nine coordinators, investigators and decision makers must also receive training. Um, for our district, that really includes, uh, all of our building and district administrators. So when we talk about or think about next steps for our district, and again, I gave a pretty brief overview. Um, but it would be, you know, our responsibility to review and update current policies on non-discrimination. Um, I believe it's my understanding that, um, that will be slated for September. We also need to ensure that all staff are trained. Uh, this is planned for in-service on August twenty-sixth. There's about a forty-five minute video. Um, that video hasn't been released yet, um, but it is the Title Nine overview for all district personnel. Um, my plan would be to share that link with the board so that you have access and I recommend viewing that as well. Um, that comes out on the twenty-first, so I know, um, myself, I will be partaking in that on the twenty-first and, uh, some of the other admin will as well. But then all staff will, will view that on the twenty-sixth. Um, and then obviously ensuring proper complaint procedures are in place. All right. What questions can I answer?
Any board questions? Now hearing any questions, Michelle?
All right, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, we'll turn it over to Suzy to talk about the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
So all of you should have in front of you, um, a printout of the budget that I gave earlier this week to you. So the preliminary front-end budget provides a balanced operating budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I used an eight point five one percent increase for our projected district equalized tax base value, utilizing the department revenue's preliminary equalized value. The final district values will become available on October first. May be assumption that our student count would remain the same. However, we're monitoring student enrollments daily and it seems some problems in the elementary and our open enrollment, so that's good. Um, state equalization age is budgeted with no change this year. We may see a slight decrease due to changes in any of the three local factors, comprising Wisconsin's general equalization A formula, the property valuation, enrollment insurance cost, as well as a difference in funds available in the state. Our total proposed property tax level is up, um, point two seven percent. Overall, equaling five million ninety-one thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. There's no significant changes to our debt service or community fund values. Staff compensations are to increase by approximately five percent due to board proved salary increases and stipends for staff. The district's health insurance rates will increase by three to four point nine percent, like we talked about in another meeting. Um, and will increase planned deductibles due to the new I R S limits. General fund revenues have an overall decrease of four point three two percent. This decrease is primarily due to the loss in S R two and three federal grant funding. We also had some one-time, um, and final grants and such as the C C two nursing grant, peer review and mentoring, REEF, and then Title One C minor program, or grant. General fund expenses decreased by two point four four percent. Majority of the district's expenditures increased annually. Compensation, benefits, utilities, insurance and transportation are driving by changing enrollment inflation. Um, we reallocated our resources and budget reserves were reduced to fund the district's current year operational needs. Um, also, of course, finally, um, we didn't have those expenses offsetting the grants. Um, we did not have as much curriculum this year because we had so much last year with the S R three. And then we also had some building projects last year that hit, that fell off. And you're primarily going to see that from the two-five function code there. But if you guys have any questions, I'm individualized, um, I don't know. That's a general review of it and we'll have more budget updates next month.
Any budget questions?
A lot of numbers.
A lot of numbers, yeah.
All right, no questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Suzy. I will turn it over to Mr. Henning to talk about pool updates and Focus on Energy projects.
Yep, so the last time that we had the pool drained was two thousand and sixteen. Um, it is currently drained, so if you, um, want to wander down that way at some point in time tonight, you can see what it looks like with the pool drain. Um, it's kind of an interesting thing to see. Um, we did end up having to drain it even though we thought, um, we might not have to to complete the project in the, um, the pit to replace the valves and, and so forth that the board approved in the spring. Um, this was the time of the year that we had designated for that project. Um, because we knew that the usage was minimal and we didn't interrupt swim team and those types of things. Um, unfortunately, when you drain a pool, you tend to find some other, um, nagging issues. And so we have, um, discovered a few things that where we have, um, Badger Pool coming in to investigate for us. There's some, some clogged, uh, pipes that, uh, restrict the flow of water in and out of the pool that we're going to, uh, to see if we can get fixed while that's drained as well. And then we did have some problems with the drain in the bottom portion of the pool itself. And that, um, is a relatively easy fix, will, will be addressed. So, uh, overall, it's good just to have it, um, drained and inspect everything and make sure it's working good. Um, but we've got a couple of things to address and, and hopefully those will be easy fixes. And we'll be on our way back in business next week. Um, should that not be the case, we'll have to update our, uh, members that use that pool and we'll, um, update the board as well, if there's any further delays to that project. Um, also kind of interesting, about every, um, few years, we meet with the folks from Focus on Energy. Um, represent, representative from the, uh, power light company and then, um, Focus on Energy. I came and did a, an assessment of the school. There's funding out there to do energy projects. Um, and so we just kind of took a look at all of our current facilities. We looked at the boiler rooms, we looked at the pool pumps, um, uh, just basically everything in the district that consumes electricity. Um, and there are some, some sizable incentives out there to do some projects. Um, you know, one of the nice things that they have is to be able to upgrade the L E D lights. Well, of course, we've already done that, um, across the district. So that's not necessarily something we're looking at doing, but we are exploring, you know. Our boilers are two thousand and eight, they're, you know, and they should be good for a while yet. But we're, we're getting closer towards the end of the useful life of those. Um, and we did talk about it one time with this pool project, adding variable frequency drives that are energy savers to the pool pumps and stuff. Those also would be eligible for incentives. So we're just kind of creating a list of potential things that the Building and Grounds Committee can, um, take a look at this fall and see if we want to do or put on the docket for our three to five-year plan, et cetera. for our three-to-five-year plan, et cetera. So it's just nice to have those experts in your building, take a look at what we're doing. They are going to benchmark the district and see where we stack up against other school districts with our same square footage, so that'll be something we'll be able to report out on in the coming months as well. We feel we're doing pretty good, but it'll be nice to see how we stack up with everybody else. That's it.
Moving on, before you would get that results or benchmark?
I think a few months, he said.
Any questions, board members? All right, moving right along, we'll go to the approval of deals and vouchers. We have presented in your packet the treasures report, the superintendent listing of disbursements through July 31st, and the district receipt. Are there any unanswered questions in regards to any of those reports?
And let's compare them all, insurance premiums paid, semi-annual payments or annual?
Um, actually, there's pretty few that are annual, and there's a few that are, I don't think it's monthly, but for most of it, they're upfront costs.
Okay, yeah, that's pretty much the whole thing there, all right, yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
Also move for approval.
Cummings, second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Ms. Cummings. Just to clarify, your motion, you're, what do you mean to approve all three of your courts or as presented? Yes. Is it a roll call vote?
Crave, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Motion carries on the six oh. Are there any legislative updates this evening?
I have none at this time.
Enough said. Any announcements? All right, public input, is there anyone who wishes to provide public input this evening? No. All right. And we'll move right into new business, action item A, it's the senior parking spaces request. You have, we had a presentation earlier, you have information within your packet. Any board discussion on the senior parking spaces request? Or questions?
Brian, do you see any problems yet?
I'm not in favor of it. I appreciate Emerson's presentation, and I think it shows great leadership from her and her class to go about the right way of asking the board for permission, and I think it can be done successfully, I'm just not sure that defacing taxpayer property is the best use of our time and energy, and I think it only has a potential to cause problems for bullying and harassment and other things going forward. So I, you know, I'm not totally set on it. If the board wants to approve it, we'll support it and supervise it and manage it, you know, as you direct us to do, but if it was up to me, I'd probably stay away from it.
It doesn't wash off, is the way I understood.
Yeah, so if something got painted that was unacceptable, you'd have to paint over it with black paint.
If it were chalk, would you feel differently about it?
The permanency of chalk obviously would be a lot less. I don't know if that's exactly what they're getting at, because they're, they want to like personalize that spot for the year, right?
And they want it to be that way for the year, or whatever, right?
Yeah, so I don't think that's necessarily what they're asking for, because we do chalk on the elementary sidewalks and stuff now already, so that probably wouldn't be as substantial of a request, which is why it's before you tonight.
This kind of reminds me of a cookout when I was a kid. Everybody's invited to the cookout, the people at the big family show up with hot dogs, and the kids with one or two in the family, and mom and dad have a good job, they show up with a steak. Pretty soon, you don't feel real keen about going to the cookout. I think it's the same thing here, not too keen about it.
I guess I would like to see the exact paint product wanting to use. I mean, I know that black out paint, if it's the same stuff we use, it doesn't black it out very long, and it reflects it right away, like vehicles turning on and stuff.
Any other discussion? I don't fault the idea, and I certainly appreciate the proposal as well, but I find it incomplete in how it's presented. We don't know where they're going to do it, and the equity piece is quite large, so if I don't have a car, how do I participate? Not everybody has a car. So I think we got to come up with something different. And I'd also like to see, I mean, there's no qualifications either, right? It's not a reward per se, it's just being a senior, right? Those are my thoughts. Any other discussion?
Well, I thought it was pretty cool when I visited Marshall and I saw what they do with their parking lot. I was only there, no, yeah, I thought it was very pretty, thought it was pretty nice, but I am very curious what it looks like now, because I haven't been to Marshall High School in a while, and if you are supposed to paint over these, I'm very curious what it looks like when you paint over this and make it black again. I was also kind of concerned about not having it out. When I read through the packet, I saw that in all, all the rules are in there, but if there was a reason, or there was blowback, or something bad happened, there was no way in there that we could reject the policy sometime during the year as opposed to wait until all the way to the end of the year. So I was kind of concerned about that, and I never saw where, what parking stalls were available for this. I don't want the primo parking to be covered by this, but I noticed, not to compare us to Marshall, of course, but I noticed with Marshall that they had, it tended to be further away, and it wasn't the primo parking that everybody wants in the morning right away. So there's a little bit of payoff if you want, if you want this, you got to park a little further out, I'm cool with that. Those were my concerns.
Any other commentary? Do we have any knowledge of how the, when you place multiple layers of latex paint, if it can be resealed? I don't know that in oil-based sealing penetrate after that, which I don't know either, as far as your parking lot maintenance is concerned.
Yeah, you seal over top of latex paint, I mean, you can seal the white, if there are lines on it, they never go away, it makes it easier to repaint it, but I don't know what it would do is, you know, once it's stopped, I might fall, and I might say, what do we do on a surface that hard?
Any other discussion? So someone wants to put a motion on the floor, or otherwise we can forego a motion and move along? Anyone want to put a motion on the floor?
Maybe why don't we just table it and have them bring back the information that we're requiring about the paint, how it looks at the other schools after they've done it year after year after year.
I would like to know those things.
And then what spots, so what spots they're going to want to use, what type of, are we going to have them sign something, you know, what does that all going to look like? And then have them bring it back, and we can move it in again.
Well, they've got the contract for you in the second. Yep.
Mr. Bartow, do you, in any of your research, did you come across any of the answers to the questions that the board has?
Yeah, so that contract is very similar to other schools in our conference, because I was in contact with their principal. The area that gets designated for the parking spots, I think it's, it says in there that I would designate them. Again, I said earlier, it would be not the prime spots, we have about a half of our parking lot available during the school day, so it would be in the back half, right, like right in the halfway point or a little behind that. So it wouldn't be spots where kids are normally parking. We'd take up, it'd be like a roll, right, we would always come together. So that's the area that we would use, it wouldn't be like the first two, three areas of the way back, it'd be, you know, where kids normally don't park. But I asked about the paint, that's the specific paint those schools use, and they've had success. The school that I taught with mostly, they've been doing it for four years, Cambridge. Now, I didn't, I did not go look at their parking spots, but when I asked them that specific question, he said that they have kids come back and paint it. They haven't had issues with it, but again, I'm just taking his word for that, because I didn't go visit those parking areas. But based on the paint that we have in that contract, that's the exact paint that they use at Cambridge. And I know there's not like if there's a mistake or incident, if there's something painted on it, again, all the approval goes to the, and prior to getting painting, so if they don't stick to that plan, they have staff, they're supervising, they're not allowed, like it's not allowed, they have to, they're going to be supervised while painting, something that has to be approved prior to starting paints. So they can't paint something that's not approved. Like, that answered all of them.
Those were all fine.
The senior class also talked about paying for it as well, when I talked to Mr. Henning about that, he meant not to do that, so we didn't put that in there, but the senior class would be willing to put 20, you know, $30 to have a spot for that, and then they even suggested putting that towards or donating it back to the school for lunch accounts, which I think would be a good idea if that's something that you want to put in a contract, if it would get approved.
Other questions? What happens if they don't, somebody hasn't painted black, says there's a disciplinary action, what is that?
Well, they're senior, so in our senior contract, if there's any disciplinary actions that aren't fully cleared up, they may not be able to participate in our graduation ceremony. So at the time, it's a lot of ownership on the students, the college is like.
Any other board questions?
Wouldn't it be a set date before they would have, or when they would have to have these spots blacked out?
Yes, yep. So there would be dates that we have, I know we have dates on there, we still want to solidify those dates, just because I know Mr. Bokley and Ms. Leonard, who are supervising those, they just want to make sure those dates work for their schedules. We do a date before school, a date like a week or two after school starts, and we have a date to solidify at the end of May for students to have to come and do that. And again, I could put the, I don't think we have the end date on there. We could put a date end of May to paint over that spot so that we can ensure everything is back to, back to normal, because I see that's not in that current contract.
Any other questions? Someone like to put a motion on the floor?
Cummings will make that motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve the senior parking spot painting event. Are you requesting anything additional, or as is?
He just needs added the dates that they need to be painted by, which he said he would.
So he would add an end date to the contract?
Yep.
So then he'll still second that motion?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to both. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Two to four vote.
I will cry.
All right, moving on, action item B, the Washington DC trip for the middle school. Let's put in your packet here, Mr. Jacob Merkle is proposing a new school trip to Washington DC in June of 2025. It's stated he's ahead of the game here in getting approval. Are there any questions or additional information regarding this trip, proposed trip to Washington DC?
I hear that Mr. Merkle is here.
Two of them. Giving him some of the summer to come and spend time.
Yeah, it's nice, it's a short time. Yeah, again, I think you probably read through this a little bit. This ties directly into our eighth grade social studies content. It's American Senate, it's the government, so we talk about the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence, three branches of the government, how elections kind of function, and so at the end of the year, everyone kind of like understands, an eighth grade trip to Washington DC is like a pilgrimage kind of thing, like it's what most kind of schools do, whether it's over their spring break or over the summer right after. It ties directly into everything we learn through the year, so it really kind of brings that real-world aspect into life and gives students an opportunity to kind of apply what they've learned throughout the year and what we've talked about into situations and actually see, you know, the building where Congress action takes place, with the House of Representatives in the Senate, and see where the Supreme Court meets, and also have some opportunities to visit some historical sites in DC such as some of the national museums there, the Arlington National Cemetery, Holland burning, home of George Washington. So it has a lot of opportunities there. Outlining it as well are some of the logistics, we would fly out of Dane County Regional Airport that has direct flights to Washington DC, all travel would be covered within the city. Through coach buses, we would always have a tour guide with us, there's security at the hotels that we would stay at. I'm doing this through the company EF Tours, which the school district has used in the past, I know Rachel Holden has used them, I believe, for New York City and Washington DC trips, but also for the trip they went to Italy last spring break during last school year. So they're a very reputable company, they know what they're doing. This comes at no cost to the school district, the cost of the trip is laid primarily on the student. The cost of the trip for each student costs $2,480, which I know is a bit high, it covers the flights, the transportation, the meals, the admission into the museums and the different national monuments. If this does get approved by the board, I would come back during the September board meeting and talk about fundraising opportunities, because I want to give the students a chance to raise funds and kind of lower the cost for themselves. This is for the students, it's all who would like to go can go, as long as we can kind of make the funds for them. So if a student is not going, they're obviously not required to buy any means. We do need a minimum of 10 people in order for this, or 10 students, I should say, in order for this to work. Chaperone-wise, it would be myself, and then we would also have the tour guide. If there's other chaperones, like another teacher or parent that would like to go, they can go, but they do have to pay the cost of going. Each student counts as like 10% off of the price for another chaperone, so if we have like 15 students go, I could have another chaperone come for 50% of the cost if we can pull off a year from the 20 students to go. That's a whole nother chaperone, a teacher or a parent that could come for no cost as well. So fundraising opportunities will come later on. Again, if this gets passed, I would like to get kind of news out immediately, use our open house in a couple of weeks, to use that as a chance to reach out to families and parents, and then in early September, holding a meeting for parents to sign up if they would like to. Any questions?
On your dates?
Why didn't you do this last year?
I know, you know Annika's going to be mad.
I shook his mouth off.
I didn't feel prepared.
Huh? It was okay.
But you came prepared today.
You did.
Yeah.
Is your planned trip dates in the school calendar or?
They are the week after school, that's on the summer. I think I have it here the week of September, June 9th. I have no specific dates yet, because I'm still kind of working that out if we get to I have no specific dates yet, because I'm still kind of working that out to get the approval. Uh, but it would probably be that ninth or tenth that we would leave, let's say three day trip.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Merkel.
Yeah.
All right, it's recommended that the board uh, approve the said trip. Any more discussion? Or any motion to put on the floor?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the Washington DC trip for middle school.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Ferry. To approve the Washington DC trip for middle school. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. Thank you for being proactive, Mr. Merkel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Officer Merkel.
Moving along, action item C, co-curricular handbooks. So we've already been presented with the said changes. Got them laid out in your board informer. Discussion. Any questions that are not answered or were posed when Mr. Bultel was presenting?
I I lean towards the higher uh, that's that co-curricular, the higher GPA.
Not changing that or correct?
That's right below that, so are you talking about co-curricular?
Yes, we're talking co-curricular. So.
Co-curricular.
This would be if you expunged the record.
If you make one mistake.
Gotcha. Expungement of your record and the ability to perform from volunteerism to wipe your slate. Only in your first two years of high school.
We did have a parent that said he was gonna email you prior to the meeting. I don't know if anybody received that.
I didn't notice any.
Not for this or against it?
Uh, to support it.
I think it's a good idea. Should I put the motion out there? I'm gonna put the motion out there, the co-curricular handbook. Yeah? Yep. You made one mistake.
Okay, so Ms. Cummings has put a motion on the floor to clarify you're proposing to approve the proposed changes for the co-curricular handbook for 2024, 2025. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so motions up on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Ferry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Or aye, yes, opposed.
Motion fails, I got two, four votes.
What is the proper way of opposing, is it aye or nay?
I don't know, I'm new here. Don't you guys know?
I've heard one of them during speaking. Yeah, it's that you never use the same setting or rule, which you do reject.
All right, moving along, uh, action item D, student handbooks. So now what we would be talking about, the student handbooks.
All three of them.
Okay, all three as presented, uh, there was a lot of discussion regarding headlights. I'm sure you recall. Any discussion here in student handbooks?
I spent a fair amount of time this afternoon reviewing those. And boy, there's a lot more comprehension to comprehensiveness to them than what I had previously thought. So I will say I move for approval as presented and discussed.
Okay. So Mr. Crave has made a motion to approve the changes or revisions to all three student handbooks, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second that, Charlie.
So, Mr. Crave has made the motion, it's been seconded by Ms. Cummings. Any further discussion? I just want to remind you, this includes the great changes that were just discussed prior. As the motion's been made to approve all three handbooks, those changes will go on the high school handbook.
No, Charlie doesn't want that.
Yeah.
He doesn't want that.
Charlie looked much more confused. Okay. All right, cool. Up we go.
So you like the wood dryer motion?
Yes.
You like the wood dryer second?
Um, I I don't know, I mean, I I guess I'm confused because I don't think that we're really lowering our standards when it's like, I don't know, Sean, you referenced, it was like to a B, from a B plus to a B. That's it.
What's the law?
I mean, I know it's law, but it's not very much. I don't know. He just wants to make it all united, so I don't know why, but that's fine. I guess.
You will, you will draw your second?
Yep, I guess so.
You're gonna withdraw your motion?
I'm gonna do it anyway.
I think it, I find it prudent to take the high school handbook differently. And there's no reason you can't split these out and approve the other three, if you'd like, because there's less to discuss in the other handbooks than there is in the high school handbook. Just throwing it out there.
So I will make a motion to approve the pre-K through eight and then the ISMS, student handbook as presented tonight.
Second. Okay, got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve all of the student handbooks with the exception of the high school handbook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. So still left to discuss here is the high school handbook. So again, you got two key things that were presented. One is the lowering of the standard for high honor roll and honor roll. And then the changing in the award points to make them align. And finally, the course retake policy to be updated with the proposed change. I'm not in favor of any of the changes, I don't find the logic. Other than potentially the award level or the points, having that be consistent seems to make sense to me, but the others, I don't find the logic in it. That's my position.
I mean, but with the, with the retaking, that's if somebody really doesn't do well. So again, we're not allowing them to retake it?
No, they would go under the original or current policy, that's it. This is, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the change, mostly because if I retake it, they just bite my previous attempt at the class. A clean slate, it should be an average in my mind.
Right, in in college, if you retake the course, they don't do the average, they take what you get. So if somebody really wants to retake to get a better score, why would we not allow them to? Like that's, I mean, maybe they had a really bad test score that one day and they had an off year. Then they get an app, I don't know.
Well, if you did better, your average would.
Going against the grain tonight on everything.
Would raise your score. Again, it's my opinion, period. I'm not against allowing someone to retake something if they need to retake the course. Hundred percent of it. We have a policy in place that seems to fit the bill for me.
I think with the current policy, it puts a bit more onus on the student right from the start without the option of taking a pass, so to speak, and making up for it later.
Let's just put this out here. Because we don't have a Spanish teacher, let's just say they have to take it online. Let's say my daughter doesn't do very well online for Spanish. She wants to take it again because she wants to get a better grade. Guess what? Then it's gonna be an average instead because we couldn't find a teacher to teach her and she had to teach herself over online. That's what I'm saying, like, there's gonna be situations that come up, like kids wanna retake it. What if they got a D and it's, we're not gonna change their grade point average, you know, and and they're on that cuff and because we take the average instead of taking their grade that they retook it with with the Spanish teacher. I mean, they're missing out on maybe principal award or high principal award. I'm just saying, like, there are situations that are gonna come up and happen.
There, there are also situations the other way because what are you gonna do if somebody retakes a class and then gets the valedictorian scholarship? High, maybe higher than likely, but maybe more likely a junior scholarship or a Stremer scholarship. That could easily happen at your seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth place students in the class, so.
But I mean, that's showing them that they really wanna try and get better grades, right? Like, if they're retaking it because they didn't like their grade, maybe they, I don't know. I'm just saying, I I don't, I see it, I see it completely opposite because I pray that my daughter gets all great grades and you don't have this situation.
She never likes it.
You never know, maybe she has a bad year, I don't know. I'm just saying, so. I don't know. See, completely opposite, but that's fine.
Any other discussion?
See, I'm kinda stuck in for some of these pieces, but I'm against other ones. So do we have to take this apart line by line and see? Or do, or can I only take this all as one?
You could do it piece by piece.
Why don't you voice all your concerns and then we can have an idea of where everybody stands on?
Well, I guess, right now with with retaking a class, it it seemed like it was only classes that were here getting a C or worse. Retaking that, I can see that, if you do, if you're doing something like that, getting a C or worse, retaking it because you have a bad semester or something like that. I'm a little soft on that, I'm okay with that. But um, I'm I'm totally against lowering the GPA for honor roll. I've, and I'm, my only concern is bringing it down a little, I I don't wanna do that at all. And then there's the the point system for awards. I I don't, I didn't see a big deal there. Like, if it matches up with what's going on, that that's cool, we can change it, that's fine. But I think those are the three pieces that we're concerned about right now.
Mr. Crave, thoughts? Did you have a chair?
I'm in favor if somebody's retaking it, that our current policy of averaging stays in place. Opposed, I have to mention the GPA, J and T four. Oh, Mr. Durkland?
Point system for awards.
Oh. I'll leave that up to administration.
That's basically where I'm at right now, so I, to make it very simple, I would be in favor of our current process and on everything except for um, changing the points awarded at the end of the year to match the current honor roll system. That makes sense, it's a good system.
Sarah?
You already told my question.
That's a chant.
So we'll make a motion for what Bill just said earlier.
Which is?
That we just simply change, we we keep everything the way it is except for changing the point system to match uh, the current honor roll system.
Second.
So can we get two points for the four O and one point five for three seven five, three nine nine?
You wanted to modify the points, but not the GPA.
Yeah, exactly.
Clear enough for you? Mr. Henning?
Mm-hmm.
So you've made that motion, sir?
Yes.
So Mr. Ferry has put that motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crave. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries on a five one vote. Brings us to action item E, the Booster Club fundraiser. Uh, we had a presentation at our last meeting and I guess we did not uh, make an official approval at that time because we were ratifying or putting in place our current policies. So we will send the floor over to the Booster Club to find out what kind of progress they made.
Okay, so the pieces of paper that you're handling, one of them has the list of every business that received a letter from us, um, detailing the sponsorship opportunities. The smaller list are the people who have actually sponsored. So we have checks from all of those people. We have not cashed them, we want to make sure that we have approval and that makes it very easy to return a check if we haven't cashed it. Um, but in that list, we have almost $5,000. So it's not, it's not the list that I would have loved to see, you know, want it to be a little bit longer, however, uh, it worked. So that's fantastic, because that's one that we've ever done before. So what we need from you is we need an approval from uh, or for all the businesses that are on that list since they will be advertising on school grounds uh, through the Booster Club. And then the other question is if we have any additional businesses that come back to us and say, we know we missed the deadline, but can we still sponsor?
Which you are definitely gonna probably get.
Yes, we will probably get, so we will.
Let's be real.
So the question is, how do we handle future question, you know, the the latecomers? If they don't come within the next two weeks, they can't get in the program because that's when we rent our, uh, the program for the year. Um, if they do come within the next two weeks, what do we need to do with that? You know, do, you have the list of everyone that received one. Unfortunately, that's not a comprehensive list of every single business that we have in Waterloo. Um, we have been contacted by people that we did not contact. They have small businesses, they're not a part of the Waterloo Business Association where we got our list from. Um, or they've contacted us in the past wanting to sponsor. So if they're new, we don't want to know about them. Um, so the question is, you know, we need, so it's the approval for the current list so that the shortlist are, I think, eleven. And then what do we do about any late ones? How do you want us to handle that?
Well, I believe this would fall under policy ninety seven hundred point oh one, in which it's stating the district administrator is gonna be responsible for screening all advertising, which would occur.
Um, you're right, but that's only the first part of it. Anything that becomes um, permanent, and permanent is a loose term because it just means something that could be like attached to a wall or something for a period of time, the board has final say over. So per policy, you're to review those sponsors before they go up. Um, that you you do have an interesting presentation tonight because, you know, if it's something on this list and you approve of all of those on their list, no matter when they get it, you're probably gonna say yes. So you could consider, I think, saying yes tonight to anybody that's on this list. And if they got somebody that wasn't on this list, then they would need to bring that back before you.
And that's gonna cover, I mean, I would guess ninety five percent of what we're gonna see if not, like, if not closer to ninety nine. Which I'd make sure that it was all, okay, great, this is what.
Yes, I keep considering here's what we're. So what does the board think? Uh, the list?
Cummings will make that motion to approve this sponsor booster list, the entire list.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurdis to approve the all encompassing list titled Businesses That Were Sent to Send Letters to Sponsor Boosters. Is there any further discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Yes, good job. Thank you.
And then if they are not on this list? And then if they are not on this list, then I will?
Bring them back.
Bring, I'll, I'll come back.
You're welcome back, anytime.
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into action item F, softball, baseball, football project. Uh, your former packet. Pursuant to our last meeting, we set a preliminary budget at two point four to two point eight million for the baseball, softball, practice, football slash soccer field. Uh, but as noted, it's not been fully approved. Uh, we were to go get additional information in regards to cost to try to finalize end game, if you will, of total cost associated. Discussion regarding the softball, baseball, football project. Everybody talking about this. Is there anything new to share, Mr. Henny, in regards to all we've heard from vendors and our contractors?
Yeah, so, so we did, um, some of the preliminary work so we could get you the things that you, you know, need to make decisions on. Um, the wetland delineation was done and that it was determined that there are no wetlands, so that's a major hurdle. That was crossed and I, I know Bill's smiling because we had a discussion about that. The survey work was done, um, the geotechnical borings will be on site tomorrow and Friday to complete that work. Um, so we'll have, you know, everything that the engineers need to, you know, complete a design. Obviously, you know, in order to go to bid, you have to let subcontractors know what they're bidding on exactly so you get the proper bids. And then, once you receive those bids, I know the board is very interested in, you know, determining, you know, what makes it in the project and what might be cut from the project. So, that still is coming, but it, we're sort of in a little bit of a situation where we're working with vendors and we're working with point of beginnings, but we haven't ever actually approved the project and so I don't wanna get too far out in front, um, if the board is not on board with doing something. So, it's, it's kind of one of those moments where, you know, you're officially, you gotta either approve or not approve the project, um, with the idea that going forward, you're gonna still have a say in anything that might be in or out of that project, um, based on those numbers and that work that gets done for you to review.
What's the timeframe right now? Like, if we said, yeah, let's go, the board said we're approving the project, you have this outline, right now, when would we start digging?
We have used the terminology that we'd like to move dirt this fall yet. Um, it's doubtful whether the entire project could be completed this fall, um, but the reality of it is, is subcontractors have busy schedules, so, you know, if one, the lowest bid contractor can't get at it till spring, are we gonna go with the next highest contractor because they can get at it sooner? So, you'll have some of those decisions to make that will vary the timeline quite substantially.
Yeah, the reason that I asked about it is that that would obviously affect when you wanna start to send the information to the public about it, because I, I I think your instincts are right, we wanna get ahead of the explanation before the explanation gets ahead of us.
Yeah, I, I mean, to that point, I kinda feel like it goes hand in hand. If we're gonna approve this project, we need to make sure that the community is ready for a referendum. Because that's, it's gonna go hand in hand together. And so, we have to get the buy-in from the community to understand, okay, we are gonna build these fields, but guess what, in two years, we will have a referendum. And are they going to approve that? Because we can say, oh yeah, it's all great and dandy, but then in two years, they're pissed because we have another operating referendum. So, I think, I think we have to, like, back up a little bit, we gotta really get the community involved a little bit more than we have been, not that, yeah, we need to, because a lot of people don't show up to meetings and, um, it's just a lot of hearsay. So, I, I, like I said, I think they both go hand in hand together and if we're really gonna do this, are we ready? Because we almost didn't pass our last referendum and they kept talking about the gym. So, I think we all have to be very prepared, this is a two point eight million dollar project that we're discussing. And it's a very big one. And if we're not financially gonna be okay in two years, yeah, so.
Yeah, Sarah, I just wanna clarify, even though we have news media in the room and we have attorneys in the room and I just wanna make sure because you started all the same, the project and then referendum, I just wanna be clear that the softball and baseball project would not cause us to go to referendum, we would not be going to referendum for the softball, baseball project.
No, we wouldn't.
You're talking about the renewal of the operating referendum that we did a year ago.
Correct, because, I mean, we're gonna probably have to have one in a renewal in two years.
Yeah, I mean, it's always difficult to see the future, but at this point in time, I, I would say that it's a high likelihood.
Okay, yeah, so, like I said, we need to get out to the community and explain this. It does.
When would Kramer have the plans prepared, prepared and let out for bid? When would bid opening potentially be?
We have the, because we haven't signed a contract with them yet, right?
I understand that there's still some on time, I think, do it.
They can have them ready by September first.
And then you'd let it off for two weeks?
Yeah, I think I said two to maybe three weeks.
So, we could potentially be opening up bids by middle of September.
Yeah, I think the timeline, the tentative timeline that we set was early October.
Lot of money.
Do we have the final project, like, the final nail of what we're discussing?
No, that would still be coming in the future.
Okay. Do we really want to approve moving forward with the project if we haven't seen the final plans?
Well, it's, it, like I said, it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg, right? You can't get people to bid on something that you haven't designed yet. And you can't have someone design something unless you sign a contract saying you're doing a project and you're planning on paying them to do it. Right, so, so there is, there is some of that where you have to agree as a board to say, yeah, we're doing a project, we understand that we still wanna review what's in and out of that project, like, you know, maybe there's not a concession stand or maybe there is a concession stand or maybe there is bathrooms or there's not bathrooms. Um, you, you know, you obviously have to address the title nine issues, so you, you can't, um, take those things out. But there are, there are some pieces in the project that could stay or go depending on what type of facility you, you wanna do.
We always have the option to deny all bids, correct? And then, you know, I don't know, sometimes contractors wanna guarantee spring work and, you know, they get this project and they're, they're potentially jack it up thirty five percent if they get it, they get it, they don't, they don't, kinda way? You know?
Yeah, right, so.
I don't wanna do it, but if I get it, I wanna make a lot of money to get down this fall.
Yeah, so you, you would have the authority to accept any of the bids too. So, if you, if you liked their timeline or you liked their number or you liked the quality of work, I mean, you, you have that discretion as a board to, to look at those and when we did the project two, two thousand eighteen, the board was there for all of the bid openings and then made a list at the meeting of which ones they were going to approve. So, we posted that as a public meeting.
Does Kramer have a list of approved contractors or can anybody vet on this, kinda work with local contractors or?
Um, they like to vet contractors ahead of time, but if somebody wants to be a bidder on there, we can send them the name and then they'll work with that company to be prepared for that bidding day.
Go.
Yep.
This will fall under Davis Bacon, wait, Chad?
I believe so, yeah.
So. That, I'm sorry, fire it, it's the law. Any other discussions? Questions? Concerns?
Well, I feel we don't have too many options. We're either compliant or not compliant.
I think we need to, like, put brakes on it for get the community involved. That's how I feel. I don't, I'm not comfortable with approving moving forward until I know the community is on board. That's just me.
Can you clarify, the community's on board with what?
This project is two point eight million because there's, we just went, we just had a referendum. I know it's not, we're not going to a referendum because of this, but we just had a referendum because of the aberration referendum. So, we are going to be going back out for financial refer, operating.
Wait, when the current, the current operating referendum expires when?
Uh, spring of two thousand twenty six. We're in our first year this, this last year was our first year.
Spring of twenty six. If we get to that point and the referendum doesn't pass, how much would that reduce the revenue annually for the district?
Five hundred ninety thousand.
Hundred ninety thousand.
Five hundred ninety.
Five hundred ninety thousand, okay. So, and, right now, the annual fee that we're gonna wind up paying for having these baseball diamonds is gonna be about, rough numbers, two hundred thousand dollars a year?
Depending on which amortization you go with, either two hundred or two fifty, yeah.
So, let's assume the lower of the two, right? I think reasonable people are gonna look at it and say, well, if you need to have a referendum to get six hundred grand, this is a third of that. I, I, what, what Sarah's getting at is people are going to conflate the two things. It isn't, money is fungible. The idea that because we borrow money to build something doesn't mean that we don't actually have payments on it, you have payments on it. In fact, the, one of the interesting things about it is now you aren't really paying two point eight million for this thing, you're paying more like, I think with debt service alone is something like four million, so at the end of the day, you're paying, paying gross for seven. Now, if you look at it the way most people do their finances, they're just looking at what do I pay per month or what are we doing per year? So, people are gonna do this math, they are gonna figure this out. You know, they are gonna understand that at some point here, that two hundred thousand goes against that five hundred ninety thousand, or at least it increases the, the amount that you have to borrow next time. So, if we can afford two hundred thousand dollars right now, it's gonna, it's gonna beg the question to the average citizen, well, that means the next referendum shouldn't be five hundred ninety thousand dollars a year, it should be, you know, four hundred thousand dollars a year, but it's not going to be, it's still gonna be six, in fact, it's probably gonna be more like eight if you wanna stay where you're at right now. So, I think what Sarah's getting at is maybe the conversation with the community is better told upfront than after this fact, because once we've spent the money, you can't take it back. And that may get into the, the entire reason behind it, which, like, like I said, I think your instincts about drafting this letter are good. I don't, there are a lot of different ways to go about it. And I think that's gonna be a better discussion to have.
And that discussion's gonna come up in two items, but.
I am not against the project, I'm just, I think we need to, okay, so, get the community involved.
Any thoughts, Chad?
I'm not against trying to get our, do this, technically, like, resolve, but if you can, we said, our, our factors all, a hundred seventy five thousand, our debt service annually, we're asking for five hundred ninety thousand dollars a year. Right now, stop, great, on the middle.
Chad?
Jeremy?
I one hundred percent want a softball field here, but how immaculate it is, that's what I'm interpreting. And making sure the community understands what, why we're doing this. Big deal, I like the letter. I wanna get that out there so everybody knows what, why we're doing this and what we're doing. With, uh, the thoughts that two years from now, we're gonna be asking them for more money, most likely.
I agree with Jeremy, I think we need to do something, we need to move forward. What I think about sharing with the community, I agree and I disagree. I think the letter will have to suffice, we had open houses before and it was almost like an embarrassment, the few people that showed up when we had our listening sessions for the referendum a year and a half ago. I mean, if the community's so concerned, then why don't they show up? So, at this point, I'd say proceed, send out a letter and we as a board can answer questions. I don't see taking another few more months and having listening sessions. I don't think it's gonna go any better than the previous listening sessions.
But this is not a referendum, this is to let them know about what we're planning as a huge project. This is like when we built the, the big field house, there was a lot of community involvement, is what I've understood, into that. Hence why we got that approved.
I think we have to look back at to how we arrived at this point. To me personally, we have an equity, we've been advised as such and we're going about fixing the problem. I'm not even, I don't even think of the semantics of what's for, who, what it is, having an equity, we have to solve it. That's our job as board, um, as is the fiduciary responsibility of making sure we're spending money properly. And, and I think this is an opportunity to enhance the experience for our student athletes, so. I get it, it'd never be popular to spend money, that's because it's not like we have a money tree out back, but we have to take action. It's not gonna get cheaper the longer we wait and we can't drag our feet. But, and I fully understand the need for the operating referendum, but we don't know what's gonna happen in two years, but we do know we have an inequity right now that we have to solve. So, I am all for pressing forward. So, I don't know if we wanna take that to a vote right now, we heard, I mean, we have two more line items to discuss on the same, really the same topic. We voted last meeting to move forward with this, basically approve the budget or approve the project, but the caveat was in there that we were not yet spending money. Any money that was spent there was to refine the scope of work so we could try to, to speak to your concerns of what are exactly are we doing, right? That's part of the communication piece, in my mind, we have to explain exactly what we're doing, not a concept drawing, right? But it's gonna probably take some money to get there. And I guarantee if we have contractors give this over and over, we're gonna have to build and we won't have any dirt moved, so. That's where I stand.
So, we either vote to proceed or we don't vote, which are, hope our contractors go away. They're not, they're not gonna hold onto this, are they? They need to know where they stand.
Not forever.
I still move to proceed. I saw move to proceed.
So, I've got a motion on the floor for Mr. Craig to approve the project and move forward again with a preliminary budget of two point four to two point eight million. Is there a second to that vote, or to that motion, excuse me? I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion on said motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Neat.
Aye.
Motion carries four-two. Proceed. Alright, moving right along here. Action item G, bond sale for the softball, baseball, football project. So, Carol Worth had provided Wisconsin Public Finance. Two options, if you'd like to further explain those, either, it's easier, Brian?
Yeah, so when we, you know, started exploring funding options for you, and we knew that a referendum was gonna be off the table for this project, you know, it quickly became evident that borrowing money was really the only option. So, we did, you know, look at your traditional lending institutions, um, the interest rates were, you know, roughly seven percent. Now, with those votes, municipalities can borrow from the local government investment pool, they're at like about six percent. And then municipal bonds are currently at roughly four percent. So, you know, given the large differences in interest rates, it quickly became evident that the municipal bonds were the best way to go. So, that's also what we did in two thousand eighteen when we had the referendum project. We, we, at that time, worked with Carol Worth, with Wisconsin Public Finance also, she's been doing this for decades. So, she's prepared a couple amortization schedules for you on fifteen-year term and the twenty-year term. As we discussed earlier, I'll just speak in round numbers, I've been like, once the exact numbers, we'll certainly provide them for you. But, you know, it's roughly a two hundred thousand dollar payment on the twenty-year amortization, and roughly a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment on a fifteen-year amortization. So, I think Bill, Bill, you said earlier that it was a total cost of like seven million, I think that was maybe, maybe I misheard you, but it, it's about nine hundred thousand in interest for the fifteen-year amortization, and a little over a million for the twenty-year, I'm sorry, for the, yeah, for the twenty-year amortization.
Yeah, I misread it, then, it's, the, the four million that I was looking at, must be, must be the all-in number, the interest and the principal, right?
Yeah. So, anyway, to, to make a long story short, I think municipal bonds are the best option for the district. And you certainly could look at different amortizations, but I think we're looking to minimize the impact on the budget as much as possible. Therefore, you know, we've extended out those longer, longer terms. Our current bonds expire in about fifteen years, so, you know, maybe there's some advantages to having those expire similar, uh, when they would come to maturity. Obviously, in addition to the interest that you save, but if you're looking at minimization to the budget, then that lower payment of the twenty-year is more appealing. So, we don't necessarily have a recommendation for you, we've been really going either way on it.
Four thoughts? So, to clarify, you're looking for direction of the fifteen-year or twenty-year amortization?
Yes.
Correct.
So, it does take, you know, a few months to work with underwriting and go to the market and then have the sale and then receive the proceeds and, and all the processes that go along with that. The board will have to pass several resolutions in order to even get any of that moving, but we just need to be able to tell Carol what documents to start preparing, which are centered around the amortization schedules that you have before you.
Is twenty years the longest time horizon that they, that is available?
That's a good question, I believe so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I, I don't think we, you know, I don't have anything I know that's anything longer than that, so we can check and see, but I don't.
Yeah, the, if my memory serves me correctly, with our amount that we're borrowing, I think we are limited in those terms, but, let, before I say anything for sure, let me, let me get you that answer.
I'm gonna try looking at my email, see if I can find it.
You'd be curious to know.
Yeah, my rationale here is, is what I've expressed earlier, that when you go to pass a referendum later on, if it doesn't pass, you want as long of a horizon to string this up as you possibly can. It's the, it's the safer vote.
And, and the interest rate still pretty favorable, what is it, three and three-quarter percent or something, that's. Yeah, historically, that's really good.
So, is there anyone who would wanna be a favorite of fifteen-year amortization? So, I guess the direction we would give is you can find, or did you find it already?
I feel like you said because of the amount being lower, we couldn't bring it out as far, but I'm trying to find that word next, I'm almost positive that was the amount.
If I remember correctly, you know, in the grand scheme of bond marketing, two point eight million is not that much money, you know, it's a lot of money, but you, you gotta have higher amounts to go to the longer maturities.
Okay, well, with what we have in front of us, there's no one in favor of fifteen, so somebody like to put a motion on the floor for twenty? With the direction that if there's another option to go further, would you like to hear about it?
Yeah, we could make the motion to go with twenty, as long as there's not an option to go longer. If there's an option to go longer, we would probably have to call an emergency meeting and bring you back together to explore that a little further.
Alright, looks like I'm keeping her moving. So, move to go with the twenty-year bond proposal.
Twenty-year amortization schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to proceed with the twenty-year amortization schedule, and with the caveat that the administration would bring back to us if there was a longer option. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're in.
Neat.
Motion carries on a four-two vote. Brings us to action item H, communication for softball, baseball, football project. There was board member input that, uh, board wanted to have time to discuss strategy and develop a plan for pushing out said communication. Discussion on that.
I would follow, but was there any hand written?
Yeah, I was, uh, congruent with our current policy in nine thousand twenty. The policies that we ratified and put in place, the spokesperson for the school is a superintendent, so. That's the person in my mind who needs to be communicating, controlling that flow of information. So, I didn't know what the confusion was, so, all ears.
If somebody were to ask me publicly or privately, what's the reason that this is being done, I wouldn't, I would have two basic answers to that. Number one, I would say that we have a current bastardization of what Title IX was ever meant to be. Does anybody know, just out of curiosity, how many pages the original Title IX law is?
Michelle said the night I had it was close to four hundred, so.
Yeah, that's not actually law, that's regulation. I just looked it up on my phone tonight, I believe, unless what I was looking at was wrong, it's like six pages, nothing. What's happened is over very long periods of time, we've had government agencies that had imposed their will with the threat of canceling funds in order to get their way. That's why when we had meeting with the town's attorney, I asked, can you point to any case law on point that would address these issues? And they haven't. And that's because this is really sort of an extruditional thing at this point, it doesn't wind up going to court. In fact, the new Title IX regulations that we just heard, uh, Mr. Armstrong talk about, uh, earlier this evening, there are twenty-one different states now that are suing federal government over those regulations. We happen to not be in that state. But the idea that some government official gets to tell some small community in Wisconsin that they have to spend two point eight million dollars is something that I find personally offensive, given these facts. And I would just assume the community knew about that. And I would also just assume that the community knew that Title IX complaints are often brought, brought by individuals. And there's not a lot that can be done or said about it, once those complaints are done, or once those are filed. And that communities are often obligated to spend this money by edict of people that are completely unelected and completely unaccountable to the constituents. Now, I understand what the school board is doing, and I have been somewhat respected, but, and I also don't have any problem if the board itself wants Brian's letter to go out as is, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just want all of you to know, if somebody asked me personally, I would give them the full story of this. And the full story of this is we are being coerced into doing this. This is not something where a constituent came to us and they basically said, you know what, I think there's a real problem here, and you're just not being fair to us. In the spirit of fairness, we want you to make this right. And then we all just concede because we're like, oh yeah, that's, that's completely right, that's not that. This is what we are being coerced, forced. And I think if the community knew that, believe it or not, I think they would buy this more than if they didn't know that. Cause right now, the way that the letter is written, and the way that this has all gone down, you are all gonna be saddled with this. You're all gonna be blamed. That's truth.
Here it is.
So, I'm, I'm, at the end of the day, if we're forced to spend the money, we're forced to spend the money, but I am all for being completely upfront and honest with the people of our community about what is actually going on. Now, I, again, I'm open to how the board wants to handle that, and if the board doesn't think Brian's letter is the appropriate venue to do that, I, I completely respect that. And I'm, I'm in the minority in terms of approving this anyway, so I'm really just trying to give advice to the rest of the board, what's gonna happen in this community after that, after those shelters go underground? Cause that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, that's really, it's not gonna be a.
Wow. Half the town's gonna be happy, half the town's gonna hate us.
Uh, I think it's gonna be more than.
I think it's gonna be more.
Half the town is gonna hate us, it's gonna be well more than that. Because people have come to me and said, how do we have the money for that?
Yeah, because people aren't stupid, they know that for generations now, we have had a beautiful park. Where we have all played baseball for, is, is, going back a very long, way before I became a member of the community. And when my parents come here, they marvel at this gorgeous park that we have to play in. I'm telling you, people are going to be baffled why we then built another park a mile wide. They're going to be baffled by it, and all I can say is, have a good explanation. And, and when they ask me, this is the response that I'm like to give for them, because it's the truth.
That's because you don't have girls, you have all boys and you get access to the nice baseball field. Until just recently, that softball field has been garbage to play on. Completely uneven, it was amazing that Ava Jenke was able to field at shortstop. Only because of her athleticism that she was able to do what she did and got her girls a state. So, the boys have that beautiful field, yeah, it is a beautiful field. And the girls get the afterthoughts, you know, they were, the girls are an afterthought.
To correct you, my boys all, except Connor, played on the very field that you're talking about, and.
They're not playing a conference game, they're not playing on something that really matters to that program at the time, you know?
I acknowledge that. But we're spending two point eight million dollars to remedy this situation. And what I've argued for vociferously is there is a least, the less costly alternative to this, that's just it's. And I'm gonna do that, and I understand it, but, listen, I, I, I'm not for, I'm all for having a girls' field that is, that is reasonably adequate. What I've been opposed to this entirely, entire time is who gets to determine what is reasonably adequate? If you and I could determine what is reasonably adequate, I'd actually be quite happy with that. What I'm not happy about is that some government bureaucrat, who I've never met, who I've never had a chance to directly vote for, is the one that's indirectly telling me what to do, and I'm offended by it.
I just wanna make sure that the girls are having equitable place to play.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with that, at the end of the day, the question then becomes, well, what is equitable? And I, I would just assume that the community at large determine the equitable nature of that. In fact, we've had conversations with the board here that, yes, in, in many respects, the boys' field was nicer, cause there's something that we can do to the girls' field to make it adequate. But there are also aspects of the girls' field that is frankly, that's your, the boys', but the boys' field doesn't even have dugouts. They don't even have a place, they have literally like.
If they just built, or, nope?
No.
Nope. Are you guys supposed, are you going to be doing that? That was not yet, you know? We did the bottom field, but that was, it's not the boys'.
Isn't Title IX about strictly the softball field, not everything else that's piggybacked on to this? What's the softball field cost?
No, I'm saying we.
No, no, I'm saying overall, your project is two point five, two point eight dollars.
Two point eight, yes.
It doesn't cost that to build a softball diamond, it's everything else that's added on for that.
Correct.
Title IX is three hundred thousand dollars, it's not two point eight million dollars.
Yeah, just the softball field alone is easily a million.
Here.
Do you, you do everything, I mean.
Now, you have, you're talking moving the baseball diamond, I'm just talking, build a softball diamond, that's three hundred thousand dollars.
Just to build a softball diamond, here, is a million dollars.
And everything inquired in it, I'm not.
If you, if you break the components out, which, um, I'm not sure is that applicable, applicable to, or, I mean, I'm not sure what everyone's getting at here, but. Because we had a site plan, and because we determined that the most efficient place to build a softball field was back near the baseball field, and we knew that that was going to interfere with the current baseball field, and that also needed some upgrade, this project has developed into a softball field, a renovated baseball field and moving the practice football field. So, I think what Larry's trying to say is that the portion of the expenses of that two point eight for the softball field is a fraction of that two point eight million, but it's. I don't know, Stu, did you look up and see what the, the piece was for the softball field?
I, I didn't read from the email, but I think it was close to like a million dollars.
Yeah, you're not that far off, I mean, the baseball field was a little more than the softball field, cause it's bigger, right?
Yeah, to, 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 to your point, if we're three hundred grand, if we're talking about three hundred grand, which is by the way what I kind of initially thought it might be, and I was foolish for thinking that. I would be, other than one was voted for, would've got it passed a long time ago, it's a non-issue.
Yeah, I mean, I understand doing, if you're gonna do one thing, everything can be done significantly better at once, I get it.
True, cause we can.
But I, I mean, I, I just don't understand.
But I mean, I just don't understand throwing that whole tally, and everybody keeps saying softball, softball.
Well, softball loan, which is, we just mentioned, it's bare minimum of a million bucks.
And if we remove the baseball field and just build the softball field, that's what we've discussed numerous times, is that we're going to be in the same position we are in right now?
Right.
So we can't do that. We have to do both, and we have to make it equal.
This is why, last meeting I had, my suggestion was, once I got the number that we have, I'm like, I would rather go back. Frankly, I would rather go back to this unelected bureaucrat in Title IX and ask them, you come down here and you tell me, of what we've got, where we currently play, you tell me what's reasonable, and why? And I'll always hear you now. Because maybe I can get that done for less than $2.8 million. Now, keep in mind, there are downsides to that.
You're saying it needs to be upgraded at the park.
But if we keep it, now we're talking about the school funding, a project that's not at the school and not at the property of the school anymore. So you're literally trading an asset to another governmental body, essentially, or the Parks Department in this case, and then you have to go along with it. So this is not an easy path either. My point was simply to get the lowest dollar amount that we can that's reasonable. Now, I'm not a fan that people outside of our community get to define what is reasonable for us, but even with that, I think that might be a better option than the current mindset or what we're talking about. Do you have a point?
I see your point, so I do.
Yeah, and keep in mind, I would, I understand your point that, yeah, I have boys and I don't have girls. It's a fair, and it really is. I can honestly say.
Speaking as a girl, and who else has girls?
Who does it?
It's always like, the girls have always been an afterthought. That's just something that I've noticed in my many years of being a girl.
I like try and at least put myself in the situation, if I were one of the, a dad, a daughter, how would I feel about it? And I would really look at it from a cost analysis. I would want the best field that I could reasonably play on that I think was reasonable cost-wise for the community, you know, that wasn't really going to break the bank. That's what I would want. And I've often said here, if you went down and you just looked at these two diamonds, I think it's hard to say that the boys' diamond doesn't look like a nicer diamond. It has, the infield certainly not. You know, so if there was something that I could do to the infield of the girls' field to make it at least as palatable, I'd be perfectly fine with that. I can't imagine that's a million dollars. Maybe it is, I don't know. And that's an avenue that we've kind of been reluctant to explore because I think we just want to kind of cut bait with all that. I think the entire process got very convoluted, and tensions got high on both sides in a negative fashion where it became hard to resolve in an entity outside of us. So what, us meaning the school board. So what the school board decided to do, to speak for everyone, was, I think we moved it here where we had entirely our own control over it, and now the costs are where they are. Like I said, this is not going to sit well with people.
I know, but this is something that has been a longstanding issue. It's been kicked down, the cans can kick down the road long enough. If this is something that, it could have been resolved many, many years ago, we would, it would have been paid for. It would have caught, the cost would have been, you know, minimal. The longer you wait on a project, the more expensive it's going to be. Do you want to continue this on down the road and let the next group deal with it? And then the cost is going to be exponentially larger. Or do you want to take care of it now? When it, I mean, $2.8 is not little, but it could be a lot worse.
How would you feel if it were put to a referendum?
I don't care. Let it go to referendum. Let, you know, you're going to have to do a referendum for the operational costs anyways, right? You said?
I'll be honest with you, if the community approved this to be a referendum, I would have actually very little. It'd be on the fences to whether or not I'd vote for it, to be perfectly honest with you. It, it's more, I want my community to have a say. And I do trust that the people that I live next to are fair and reasonable people. I'm convinced that the board members are. We've had a lot of discussions about it. We're, at the end of the day, we really wanted to try to, as much as we can, to make things as equitable as we possibly can within reason. Well, the whole within reason part is what ultimately comes to the contentious part of this.
Thank you for the discussion, the discussion, but let's get back to the communication plan. We've already approved it. We're somewhat past, we're going to talk about operating. Bill's laid out his thoughts. Anybody else? Chad thought the letter was good?
I already thought what Brian presented was adequate.
Sarah, did you find any problems with the?
Yeah, I mean, I wrote Brian, I don't think that, out of Bill's point, I don't think that the community is really going to. Agree with it, but I mean, to Bill's point, if everybody else agrees, then send it off.
Jerry?
If the community doesn't agree with it, we'll hear about it at the next board meeting.
Mr. Crave? I can always build the idea of offer more transparency on what's behind it.
No, otherwise we'll go ahead with the letter.
Okay. And again, congruent with our policy, that letter is sent by the district administrator. So would you like a motion to approve said correspondence, Mr. Hennig? Or do you just need the board to affirm that we're going to proceed for our policy?
Well, I mean, everyone's reviewed the informational letter. We can either approve that, unapprove it, or modify it. So, I mean, I'm hearing about 50% in favor and 50% opposed. That's not a great place to be as a district administrator. So can we modify it to gain more support, or? I'd say modify it.
Is there anything someone would want added to the board that will set communication up?
Well, nothing that I can, I mean, I got to draft something out, but, and I don't know, what kind of a, this isn't something that has to go over in the next couple of weeks or even before the next meeting, right?
There's no requirement, no, I just.
But I mean, from a branding standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're passing motions, and we're, minutes are published in papers, and there's YouTube publications of meetings. And so, you know, to not hear an official statement from the district is kind of awkward, but, I mean, we want to get it right too. So we should do it as quickly as possible, in my opinion, or it should have been done already.
I see nothing in the letter.
Well, you've got information, do nothing, you want to do whatever it is.
I don't disagree with what you say, and I still disagree with the letter, so.
All right, somebody like to put a motion on the floor in regards to the correspondence that's already been prepared?
I'll make the motion to approve the communications softball, baseball, football field project.
I will.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to move forward with the prepared communication piece that the district administrator will disseminate to the community. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
carries on a four-two vote. All right, moving to staff positions, action item I. There's a number of resignations, and it looks like five, five letters of employment. Thank you all. Any discussion here on the acceptance of six resignations and the approval of five positions? Please note, as put in your informer, we do not have a, we do not have a Spanish teacher, and we are hoping to use online courses to provide that instruction in grade seven through 12, given the hiring requirement.
Yeah, and I'd just like to take an opportunity, I know we've talked about this a lot with the board, and I think the community knows it too, but the hiring world has become very difficult in education because there are extreme shortages out there. Our team probably, even though we only had a handful of people to replace this year, our team, you know, probably expended the most amount of energy to date trying to fill those positions, and really got creative, and really spent a lot of time making calls and making connections, and, you know, and doing the things that, you know, they do on a regular basis. But it was, you know, on the extreme level this year to get things filled. And I want to thank our admin team for doing that, because we did get positions filled. However, we do not have a Spanish teacher. And so, we were doing online learning at the middle school already, and so we will expand that to the high school, and then more than likely look again next spring. If you talk to any of our neighboring school districts, they're almost all in the same boat as well. So it's not unusual to be providing Spanish in that format. It's just unfortunate, especially given our demographics in the district and so forth, that we don't have somebody, but we'll keep working on it. And we were able to, you know, find some very good people for those other openings that we had, thanks again to the hard work from our admin team, so.
And can you go ahead?
I did have one quick question. Was the agricultural teacher from Columbus, and she came and then she left?
Yeah, that's the one that we hired at the June meeting, I believe, and then never really worked for us, has already left, and now we have a new one, so.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis to approve the staff positions as presented. I do not have a second to that motion.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Dolphin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh. Brings us to action item J, teacher leadership positions. The teacher leadership positions, there are a number of them. And again, as we've made an adjustment on the agenda, we've added Mr. Jacob Merkel in here for 5 to 12 social studies and curriculum lead. And Megan Burns has been corrected to the 5 to 12 science curriculum lead. That dollar amount remains the same, but Mr. Merkel was inserted there. Are any questions on the teacher leadership positions? The question mark, we're still trying to find, to fill the void, or?
Yep.
Any other questions here?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the teacher leadership positions.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the teacher leadership positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh vote. Brings us to action item K, the 2024, 2025 other co-curricular positions. We have a number here. To approve, any questions? Hearing none?
I make a motion that we approve the staff, those staff members.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the 2024, 2025 other co-curricular positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Action item L, overloads and advanced placement assignments. So you've got your overload assignments here with five positions. And then you've got AP course assignments, which are six positions. Any questions?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the overload and advanced placement assignments.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. The action of the 2024, 2025 budget. You received, you have budget documentation in your packet. We've also got supplementary information from Susie this evening with the presentation in regards to, oh, Mr. Crave, a lot of numbers. Any further questions on the budget? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Cummings, Ms. Cummings, rather, to approve the 2024, 2025 budget as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. I will make the action to move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1925, pure and uncourteous C, for the purposes listed on the agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, second, or a motion by myself, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to move to a closed session. That is a roll call vote. Crave, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Party, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, we are in a closed session. The record shows 9:00 p.m. Take a 10-minute recess and allow him to turn down the cameras. After this, Crave, etc.